Okay.
It's coming, it's coming. All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. Any final action to report on a closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No final action.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, Miklos, and Moran.
Here. And would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so agenda updates.
Mr. Mayor, you have two items tonight that have been updated. There are revisions to Item 7J and revisions to Item 9A. The revisions are available at the back table and have been provided to the council.
All right, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next up is Business from the Floor. You have two speaker requests. The first is from Jeff Ferrera Pro and the second request is from Todd Pfeffer.
Okay, so Jeff. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Today, the Folsom Historical Society owns the Howard Senior and Mabel Chan House at 917 Sutter Street.
All right. Been working hard on that, Jeff.
I have been waiting ten years to tell you this. Folsom was once home to the second-largest Chinese community in all of California, and we're now poised to be the home of the Folsom Chinese Heritage Museum that will honor that community. The story of the Chinese who lived in 19th-century Folsom is a story of dignity and perseverance while facing hardships that would bring most 21st-century Americans to our knees. Their story speaks to both the best and the worst of our shared American heritage. There are many echoes of this story playing out in our world today, and much we can learn if we take the time to think about it. Our goal in opening this museum will not be to tell people what to think. Our mission will be to present the story in all its complexity with its many contradictory narratives, and then encourage our visitors to draw their own conclusions. I'm intentionally leaving out the details because I want you to be intrigued. I want you to share my eagerness to see this museum come to life. In our initial efforts, if our initial efforts are successful, we also have a grander objective. The Chinese community's story will be even more meaningful when considered in the context of all the other cultures that came together during and after the California Gold Rush. There's room in our newly-acquired property to eventually build a second wing to the museum. With that, we hope to open the Folsom Cultural Heritage Museum. Folsom was the grand central station of the California Gold Rush. What might we learn from the mixing of so many cultures in one place? The diversity that defines California today has its origins here. Might that story offer lessons for us today? Maybe it will inspire us to be more open to other people's perspectives. Maybe it will draw us closer together in a greater appreciation of our shared humanity. If you consider these worthy goals, we can use your help. We've spent the past decade dealing with fundraising through the worst recession in 80 years, learning more than we ever wanted to know about probate law and title insurance, and finding ways to carry on each time we encountered yet another obstacle. Acquiring the property is an important milestone. Now we begin the work of restoring the building and designing the experience that will teach and inspire future generations. Of course, this project can't succeed without help. We need people like you to become members of the Folsom Historical Society, volunteer on one of our committees, join the family of volunteers who keep the Folsom History Museum and Pioneer Village up and running, and contribute to either the Museum Operations Fund or the Chan House Restoration Fund. For further information, you can contact the History Museum at (916) 985-2707, or info at folsomhistoricalsociety.org, or you can contact me directly, Jeff Ferrera Pro, President, Folsom Historical Society, (916) 792-9438. Thank you.
Jeff, what's the, what night is History Unwind?
What?
History Unwind is the next.
Oh, Unwind?
Yes.
I don't remember the date offhand. I'm sorry, I should, but I don't.
But they can get that from the Historical Society website?
The History Museum website will have that, yeah.
It's in, it's coming up the middle of next month, I believe.
Yes, it is, yeah.
I just don't remember what night it is.
Yeah.
And I want to say it's a Sunday, maybe it's the 15th?
I think that's about right, yeah.
Okay, and that is at Unwind on Sutter Street.
That's right.
I spoke to Candy Miller this morning, and I understand that they, we actually had more people attend the Antique Evaluation Day, and the museum made more money than they did last year.
Yes, it was really nice to see that.
Yep, it was nice that the weather cooperated. It wasn't either freezing cold or a million degrees.
It's been a little tough this summer, how hot it was. There's a lot of times people weren't coming into the museum, and so that's, that's affected our income this, this summer, so lessons learned from that, too.
And that's always, that's always a good event. They do it typically every year.
Of course, yes.
It's, you know, for those, it's kind of like Folsom's the answer to Antique Road Show, and actually, we've actually made it onto Antique's Road Show a couple of times when there was big finds, so.
Yeah.
Put that on your calendar for next year.
Yes, so congratulations again, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
I know that's been a passion of yours for a long time, and I guess, a suggestion I would have, depending on where we're at with that project, you know, next year, if you can use some muscle and some elbow grease from Community Service Day, make sure you...
We're actually signed up for this year.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, we, we were crossing our fingers that we'd close escrow in time to be able to do it. So, yeah, we're ready.
You got way over that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do some weed abatement and some painting.
Super, super.
Yeah.
I'll make sure I'm down there, so, great. Congratulations again, Jeff.
Thank you. And thank you all for your patience in allowing the property to stand for this long while we've been working on this. That's very much appreciated.
Great, and pass along our thanks to the Chan family as well.
Absolutely.
I know they were instrumental.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Todd Pfeffer.
All right.
Good evening, Todd. Good evening. By now, you are well aware that Empire Ranch Road has a verified speeding problem. To review, the city's traffic study in September 2016 found that one out of every six to seven cars are driving faster than 58 miles per hour in this 45 zone. The police department's citation data shows that speeding will more than triple from 2016 to 2017. The average speed at which drivers were ticketed was just shy of 62 miles per hour. Additionally, one out of every six to seven ticketed speeders were driving freeway speeds, that is, 65 miles per hour faster. Today marks the one-year anniversary since I first appeared before you on this topic. This is the fifth council meeting at which I've spoken, I've written you three letters, and I've sent you nine emails imploring you to take action. I attended the August 22nd council meeting, in which Mark Rackavan gave a presentation regarding upcoming traffic safety and operations projects. I'd like to commend Mr. Rackavan for his acknowledgement of the danger that exists on Empire Ranch Road as a result of speeding, especially the 1.2-mile stretch between East Natoma and Broadstone. I'm here tonight to say, on behalf of the concerned residents in the aforementioned area, I fully support Mr. Rackavan's proposed solution, namely, accelerating the installation of traffic signals along Empire Ranch Road. I agree that waiting until the year 2022 to install signal lights at Iron Point, Broadstone, and East Natoma is very risky from a safety standpoint. I'm sure you'd agree that ensuring the safety of the community is money well-spent from local transportation funds. I urge you to vote in favor of the project so the process can commence as soon as possible. In closing, I must say I would have appreciated being informed of Mr. Rackavan's presentation ahead of time. Luckily, I checked the agenda and was hoping that Empire Ranch Road was going to be discussed, which thankfully it was. All it would have taken was a quick email inviting me to the meeting. I don't think that's too much to ask, especially for somebody who's invested a lot of time and energy over the course of a year on an important issue that affects so many. Thank you.
Todd, are you on the list of people to whom the council agendas are emailed every time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, and that's certainly a path, but, but we apologize for that oversight, because we know you've been tuned in and plugged into this for a long time, so, so that's, that's on us, so, so we apologize for that. But we appreciate you coming out, and we are going to work hard to get that, get all those, you know, those improvements put in as soon as possible.
And I think, Todd, if you, if you would like, I believe that if you contact the clerk's office, there's an email list of people that receive every council agenda. It'd just, it'd be like an instant reminder when it shows up in your mailbox, so you can look at the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, since Krista decided to ignore Christine on scheduled presentations, our city clerk has, has a modification to the agenda to announce.
Yeah, we were going to take Business from the Floor out of order, so, my apologies. Next up is Scheduled Presentations, Item 5A, which is Presentation Regarding the 2017 Community Service Day.
Good evening, Christine.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Manager for the City of Folsom. I'm pleased to join my fellow committee members here tonight as we talk about our plans for the Fourth Annual Community Service Day. The Fourth Annual Community Service Day will be held this Saturday, September 16th, from 7:00 a.m. till noon. More than 2,800 volunteers will complete over 50 projects this day, and more than $130,000 in cash and in-kind sponsorships has been donated to this to date. This is Folsom's largest day of volunteerism and service. The 50 projects are designed for every age, interest, and ability. Some of the projects include the beautification of six Folsom Cordova Unified District Schools, military care packages, military thank-you cards, Pioneer Village garden and carriage cleanup, Chan House renovation, Folsom Lake cleanup, trails cleanup, and the painting over at the Folsom Railroad Museum, just to name a few. New this year are Neighbors Helping Neighbors projects. These projects focus on Folsom residents who can use a helping hand, most of whom have, are on a fixed income, and many seniors and those with limited ability. So we aim to assist 18 households with gutter cleaning, fence repair, weeding, and sprinkler repair. Volunteers are still needed, and we're asking for the community's support for the project and also their, their support in helping get the word out. A citywide food drive is the largest project of its kind. Last year alone, 115,000 pounds of food were collected. This week, teams of volunteers are canvassing Folsom and distributing empty garbage bags that have been donated by Rayleigh's, and every resident in the city will receive one, more than 26,000 households. Residents are asked to fill the bags with non-perishable food and put their bags out by 8:00 a.m. on Saturday. New this year is a partnership with Rayleigh's in Bel Air. We're having a Stuff the Bus Food Drive over at Bel Air off of East Bidwell Street and Broadstone. Shoppers will be encouraged all day to purchase a bag of groceries, a grocery sack full of non-perishable food, and help stuff a Folsom stage line bus with groceries that will later be delivered to the food bank that afternoon. FM Station 106.5 will be doing live radio remotes that morning and helping promote this food drive throughout the entire Sacramento region. A donation drive will be held again over at Lakeside Church from 7:00 a.m. until noon, and organizers will be collecting bikes, glasses, and yarn. The Folsom Prison will collect unwanted bikes, which will be then refurbished and later distributed to local families in need. The Folsom Host Lions Club will be collecting eyeglasses for the Folsom Vision Project, and the Folsom Lake Lions Club will be collecting yarn to support the Hook and Needles Program over at the prison for one of their rehabilitation programs. Thanks to a partnership this year with the prison, the police department, and with Mercy Housing, more than 30 bikes will be donated to local kids in need on Community Service Day. So this event wouldn't be possible without the tremendous outpouring of support from our business community, and we've had an overwhelming response from our, from our sponsors. This year, we received, as I mentioned earlier, over $130,000 in cash and in-kind sponsors. That's $40,000 more than last year. A special thanks to our presenting sponsors, Intel, Mercy Hospital of Folsom, and the Rotary Club of Folsom for their $15,000 support. Our platinum sponsors at $10,000, gold sponsors at $5,000, and silver at $2,500, and for our many bronze sponsors who have contributed $1,000. It has been my pleasure to join my council member, Steve Miklos, and my fellow committee members who are here with me tonight, so I'd like to introduce each one of them. Rob Ross with Think Smart Inc., Justin Rathel with Revolution's Naturopathic, Joe Galliardi with the Folsom Greater Partnership, what? Tongue tied, okay, thank you. Angela Griffin with the School District, Dr. Anthony Rotota with Kaiser Permanente, and Tammy Larson with Cloud Nine, Y.K. Charlem Charlet with the Folsom Parks and Recreation Commission, Stephanie Smith with Intel, and Pam Murray with the City of Folsom. So I'd like to invite, thank you, all the committee. So I'd like to invite both Joe and Stephanie to say a few words about their involvement with Community Service Day.
Where's your red shirt, Stephanie?
I never get the memo, somehow, you know? Every year.
Always prepared.
You know I'm on the team. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, if you get right up close.
Okay. Yeah, so Intel is very excited to sponsor again this year. We sponsored, I think, for the last two years, and we're always proud to be able to sponsor this event. This is one of our biggest events all year, and this year, we're sponsoring three projects. We're working with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District. We're working with Parks and Rec for two other projects as well, so we're going to have, I think, around 150 volunteers out on the day. But we're really excited for something that, you know, so many neighbors come out and support. It's really an event that we like to, to sponsor every year, so.
Great, thanks.
Glad to be a part.
Thanks very much, Stephanie.
So Stephanie got selected for her looks and for her sponsorship. I got selected because I didn't show up to one of the meetings, so. You know, Folsom is such a great community, you know, it's one of the few communities where there is a Community Service Day, and I think that what Christine spoke about earlier really demonstrates how people helping people really make a big difference. And, a microphone. But, you know, as, between the business community, the residents, volunteerism, it really elevated this, and I couldn't commend enough both Christine and Pam from the city really coordinating this, along with Steve, but all the committee members here put a lot of time and effort into it, and all the people that volunteer. It's a record year for both sponsorship and for volunteerism and the number of projects. So it's really about people helping people, and it's what makes Folsom such a special place. So it's really an honor, a privilege to be able to talk about that here and to really thank each and every one of you to adopt Community Service Day here in Folsom. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Jill, and thanks for all your work on that. And is that it, Christine?
It's about.
Okay, no, no worries, no worries.
Okay, so we had a pleasant surprise last week. Dozens of posters were developed and designed by students over at Theodore Judah Elementary School. They have printed hundreds of these, and will be canvassing the city with words of encouragement, messages about volunteerism, and about the individual projects as well. So I wanted to give you a sneak preview of some of those.
Fantastic.
So anybody interested in learning more or getting involved are encouraged to visit FolsomCommunityService.org. Thank you.
Fantastic, thanks, Christine. I'm going to hand the floor over to Steve Miklos there.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, this, this, as Joe said, you know, the volunteerism is incredible, and I just want to make sure the community sees these volunteers. They're community members, they don't get paid, and yes, you know, we have employees, but again, what time and effort they put into this is not worth any penny you could ever assign to them. They do it out of love to the community and a love for just what they do and what they can provide. I would just like to take a moment and personally give a standing ovation to not only these folks that are here, but all the committee members, because without you folks and all the time and effort we put in there, I know how much time goes into when we're not sitting in that conference room making decisions, so I'd just like to say thank you. I couldn't have a better team to be working with, and, and the reason this thing has been successful, and it's bigger than even last year and the year before and the year before, is because of the great team I'm blessed to work with in this community. So thank you, guys, I appreciate all the hard work you do for us.
Thank you, Steve.
Fantastic. Yeah, and then I'll just follow up. So the difference between the red shirts and the blue shirts are, the, the blue shirts are much more important than the red shirts, okay? No, the, the red shirts are the organizing committee, so you'll see all the volunteers out there with the blue shirts. And the one thing I'd like to add is, this is a cool design, so whoever had a hand in the design of these T-shirts and everything, it is, they are very well done. Who's that, who are you pointing to? Okay, great, thanks, thanks, Brian. Yeah, that's really nice, nicely done.
And it's important to note that Andy is an expert on blue T-shirts.
Well, I'm always looking for a reason to wear a T-shirt at a council meeting, so thank you. Worked out well, so.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so that concludes that item there, so next item, please.
The next item is your consent calendar.
All right, so we have...
I'll move consent.
Okay, we do have a request to pull item, let's see, is it Item E? Yes, Item 7E for discussion or separate vote.
And I will move the remainder of consent.
Oh, and H, Ernie? Okay, and H, okay.
I'll still move the remainder of consent.
Okay, so, so everything except E and H moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Council Member Gaylord, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, Miklos, and Moran.
Yes, okay, Item 7E.
So Item 7E is Resolution Number 9963. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with SW Allen Construction, Inc. for the construction of Fire Station 39, determination that the project is exempt from SEQA and appropriation of funds.
All right, thank you. So, Ernie, you'd wanted to discuss or questions? Is your thing pushed there?
Not on, now it's on.
Okay, there, you're live.
Okay, now, this was on, they came on the consent calendar maybe two meetings ago, and I had a question on the arrangement between the, since this fire station will be on a park site. I just wanted to know what the arrangements was now. I knew what they were in 19, or 2005 or '06, '07, but I, I didn't see what I thought I should see. But before I go into what my argument is, I want to first of all say, I have no argument about a fire station being there in the east area. I have no argument at all that it's necessary for the safety of the people in the east area. I have no problem. My concern, and it's, it's a matter of legality, and as I understand it, not to compete with our notorious Steve there, is what the law says of what we can and cannot do with a park site. Back when I came on this council, the, where we left that particular park and the fire station, because there's a lot of dialogue, and other than me and Roger, everybody else on this panel were here in part of that dialogue of that site, on the fire station, and on the study that said, "We need a fire station down there." And they came to the conclusion, the only site, the best site from that consultant team, was on that park site. Well, fine, at that time, the park master plan called for a passive park, and one of the anchors on that park at that time was the community barn that was salvaged from the east area during construction. Obviously, we all know that's no longer the barn's area, it's over in the zoo, and has changed its mission of what it was at that time. But our arrangement at that time with the fire department, or what the park commission, and I was the chair, so I know what I'm talking about, was that it was going to be a joint deal, there was, I think it was only about three acres or so, but in order for some kind of compensation, which I will quote, what I feel is the law that says there has to be compensation, when you go on a park site after it's been designated a park site, and I say it's designated because it's been in our master plan for a while, that we, they would maybe expand a parking lot, and it would help parking for the park. That was, that was the only thing that we asked. And we also were welcoming them as partners, because it's nice to have eyes on, on the park, especially where you have static displays, which was primarily what's going to be, or was going to be in that park, including the barn. It wasn't going to be no active animals like there is now, but then it wasn't. So we welcomed the fire department being there and discouraging vandals, because we know in our park system, when it gets dark, you get trouble. As long as there're people in the parks, the parks are great, and nobody destroys them. But you go dark, and we find that out in November, December, and January, when there's less people in our parks, that happens. So I was looking for some kind of arrangement on this, and I didn't see it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I might be able to clarify this, and certainly our council will correct me if I, if I step out of legal bounds, but the city does own that parcel in fee. It was dedicated in fee by the developer without restriction. And lacking any direct policy direction from the council in the past, and recall, this happened many, many years ago, we have been proceeding just as, in kind of a we are us methodology, so there is no, Councilmember Sheldon is correct, there is no compensation to the parks, per se, in this agreement, but we don't have any policy direction to do so, and didn't have back in the day in 2007, and so that's why this staff report doesn't reflect any of that. The parcel is owned by the city without restriction.
So there's, so there's no legal hangup, it's just a policy call?
It's a policy call, that's correct.
Let me, you know, I don't get, me and Everett had round one and two, we don't want to do three. I don't agree with that. I think that because it was in our plans and because we discussed it, and it was common knowledge, you know, and we had no opposition to the fire station going there, we just wanted a little compensation, so we don't set a precedent in this city. This park system was started back in '85 or so, January '85, the first person came into the city as a park person. It has always struggled to get land that wasn't on a hill and a gully. We got that solved in 1986 with a resolution ordinance that said you got to get 5%. So we started to have, where we could build land on flat ground, okay, not on hilltops. Then it took us six years to get the first impact fee, so we could build something on that land. And then at that time, it was a very, we got $1,700, and we were tickle pink. It should have been $2,700. So all of them years that we were fighting to build parks, we were always running into deficit, and we knew someday we'd run into a wall. So those of us that went through 20 years, more years of, and I say those, it's not just me, there's a lot of people involved in this, to make that system that we have today, and I think even the city manager recognizes quite often, everybody, that this is a great park system, and done well and maintained by Robert and his people in a fine manner, and it's really enjoyed by our residents, and that's why we built it, so the residents and the kids can have a ball, and they, they do that. But I don't know what, well, you say it's not be, we're on the impression that they had Elliot Holmes at the time, or whoever it was at that time, I'm sure it was Elliot. They had to dedicate a certain amount of park acreage for the project that it was up against. So for him to say he dedicated open land to any department within the city, but call it park dedication, I don't buy that. Okay, I'm sorry. And because otherwise, we were operating on the master plan in, in the fraud, and I don't think that was the case. PRC 5407.2 describes, at the State of California, as what you do with parks that's been, land that's been designated as park. Now, we want to argue it was officially designated. We know in the park system, and I'm sure Robert knows, I might ask him to verify, but we know that that was a park. That was planned to be a park, always a park. We didn't have the money to do it, along with about five other ones over in the east area that we're hoping to figure that out. So I'm saying that there should be a compensation, and the only compensation I'm saying is to recognize, because does that three acres bring down the moon and the sound? No. Okay? It won't, it won't kill the park. But does it set a precedent for the 125 acres south of 50? It could, and it's not worth it. Okay? It's not worth it to set a precedent for a fire station with three acres without some kind of compensation. Build a little parking lot, expand it, and everybody will be tickle pink and happy, will go on, and you won't come back when we get to start building 125 acres of necessary park on the other side, and someone, or some council, probably none of us, okay, decides that, oh, that was a nice 20, 30-acre park site in one of the community sites, but I'd rather use it for Timbuktu Department. but I'd rather use it for Timbuktu Department. No. We cannot afford to do that, nor should we do that. And I think this, I quoted, and I got it from a very high professional, not me. I'm not that smart, that this is a valid argument on compensation for land that's been designated as park. Now, if you want to argue with me that it's illegal as how you switched it, that you don't call it park, go ahead and argue with me. But don't argue with the 75,000 people in this town that like these parks, and they want the ones at 125 acres south of 50 to be as good, if not better. I'm sure they will be. Okay? Don't set setting precedents that you call it one thing, and you switch it to something else. We're only talking to... But I want to be sure you understand. I'm not fighting the fire station. I'm not fighting the east area need for that. I know it's... I'm all for it. All I'm saying, don't set the precedent on three acres that could go down south of 50. Okay? Because the money will start flowing there. We don't have the money to build a tender on this site that isn't... Not yet. I'm expecting the mayor to be a miracle man and find that money. But we don't have it yet. But it will come in on south of 50, and we're not going to commingle those funds. So, all I'm saying is, I think before we approve this, that this should be opened up, that there should be some type of a design consideration, okay, that something in the way of compensation. And I'm not looking for the moon. We're not holding nobody to abandon. We're a partner. We know we'd be a partner. That's why we want the fire station to keep an eye on the park. That's partnerships. That's what Steve talked about earlier and what we pride ourselves with the city manager always talks, the 95630 idea. That's exactly what it is. It's partnerships. But you've got to recognize, we worked hard to get every single damn acre of park in this town up to now. And also, Steve and Jeff and all the rest of the council worked hard to get the 125 acres that's over south of 50. I'm not ready, as one councilman, to give up an inch without some kind of non-precedent-setting action. So, that was my opposition on this one. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, before council weighs in, I would offer a couple of things. We have just been proceeding on policy direction that the council gave us many, many years ago without... With only varying in one regard, and that is, I sent this project back for redesign about two years ago because the fire station was bigger than we wanted it to be and ultimately bigger than we could afford it to be. And so, we went in to try and do a little bit of a redesign. So, it would accomplish two things. Most primarily, it would accomplish the service delivery needs of the Folsom Fire Department. And secondarily, would have minimal impact on the park site, knowing and agreeing with Councilmember Sheldon how important our parks are. With the council's actions tonight, if you were to approve this construction contract, we will have exhausted the funds available to build this fire station. There are no additional funds within the various fire capital funds in order to change the project. And so, I offer you that as one bit of information that's also contained in your staff report. Secondarily, if the concept is to redesign the fire station in some way in order to accommodate additional park improvements, funding will have to be found for those improvements. And the likely result on the fire station will be to increase its cost and delay its construction. And lastly, I would just offer that we have not considered this as in any way presidential within the existing city of Folsom or certainly within the Folsom Plan area, as its park plan is very well established, perhaps better than it has been on the north of 50 throughout history. Because as the mayor likes to mention so many times, we have learned a lot of lessons over the many decades we've been doing this. And additionally, the park sites and the fire station sites and the police station sites and the other municipal sites are all very clearly identified. The... Again, as I mentioned earlier, the action that was taken on this and the policy direction that staff has been reacting to dates back prior to 2007 and goes back all the way to 2005, which is the date of the service delivery plan that this concept for this fire station was developed. And you... This council will remember, and certainly my staff here in the fire department will remember that was here at the time, there was no east area fire station in the east area development plan. This was a new development that we identified at the time when we were looking at overall service delivery plans. And while master planning for infrastructure was a relatively well-established principle within the city way back in the '90s, service delivery plans for operational delivery weren't so much. And so, a lot of these plans happened in the late '90s and early 2000s with this fire service delivery plan being one of the initial. And so, with that, I hope that offers some clarity. And if Mr. Wong has anything to add, I'll...
Before, Steve, can I just respond to the city manager, just two items?
Sure.
One, in my history, and I've been around a while and going to be around more, I hope. You don't go... Unless you're bad people, and none of us are bad people. That's not what I'm talking about. You don't go around to set a precedent. You do something that sets a precedent. You don't... Unless you're a bad person, you didn't decide the precedent. I think what we're doing now will possibly set a precedent. It's when somebody else brings it up and say, "Hey, the precedent's..." That's when the precedent's set. So, I don't accuse you of going out to do it. I find it hard to believe as the chairman of the park commission for that period of time that you refer when... And I sat in this audience and heard all the conversation on this draft with the fire and all the difference in the location. I was there. I remember most of it. Not all, every detail, but most of it. For us to think that the park commission that did as good as we've done on all the years on these things would not remember or be under the assumption that you didn't support us working together on that park site, this... The council, it defies my imagination. I don't think we're that naive that for three years before I got on this council that I was under a false impression that that wasn't a park site specific and that that wasn't an arrangement that when they put the fire station there, we'd have an agreement of joint cooperation. That's not true. And it's not true for seven or eight people or maybe staff that I'm familiar with. They were not under the impression. So, maybe over time, our minds change, our vision change in our theories. Or maybe it's that some people were involved and some weren't people who were involved. Maybe the park commission was misled. We could have been, but not... I don't believe so. So, all I say is, I am worried about the precedent, not that the three... And I don't want the fire station to be held up. I don't want it to be redesigned. I think whatever we could do. And I... The thing that probably re-irritates me a little bit, not a whole lot, but maybe humorous, if we're sitting there and we're under the impression for X number of years that this is a co-location when that fire station gets the money to get built, why would the park commission not be, at least a courtesy of being advised that there's been a maybe a different interpretation of it? And I called the park commission chair, although he's climbing a big mountain now, so he's not around. But I did check with the second in charge, and no... None of this ever came back to the park commission, even out of courtesy. And this council has been very, very good on courtesy to the commissions to go back to them when they think they have to. It wasn't done. And maybe it wasn't done not out of intent to be bad or mean. Maybe it wasn't done because you didn't know what we were... We, at the time, in the park commission, was living under. But I'm telling you right now, as a... And I know people are going to say, "Hey, you're all park, park, park." I spent 20 years in park. It burned into my body. I got the scars to prove it. So, yeah, when I see something that seems to go contrary to what we all, we all, not me, we all worked to make this park system what it is, I'm going to speak up. So, and I'm quoting what I've been told is a regulation that says you have to look at it. If you have, and you can make a case that it doesn't, I guess I'm going to be outvoted. But I will not vote for this particular... I will vote for the fire station. Don't get me wrong. I just can't vote for the lack of compensation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
So, I will not dispute, and certainly not my intent to get into the policy arena that's within the purview of the council. But I will. I would like to take a quick minute to discuss the legality of positioning a fire station right here at this particular site. So, allow me to take a quick step back. The... There appears to be a difference in perception as to whether this site is designated and be restricted to be a park in a traditional sense. That's how we would like, and that's how we acquire new additional properties for park and park use, generally speaking, versus whether this is a park site in a loose sense of the word where a fire station is also contemplated for this location for a number of years, except the underlying zoning for this site is park. And legality-wise, it's the latter. So, when the council adopted the resolution back in 2009, authorizing the city to accept Elliot Holmes donating this site to the city, the resolution itself was transparent in stating, reciting that this site is designated for a fire station. There's nothing discussed about park, even though the site was labeled as park. It's a Park Site 52, I believe. And hence, leading to Elliot Holmes donating the property to the city with no restriction, no restrictions. So, it's a little different scenario than the traditional park scenario where we would have to look into how to use that particular restricted site for park purposes. In this case, it's a clean slate. There's no restriction. I understand the history that you had in the past, but I'm looking... I'm sharing with you the legality of putting a fire station at this site.
I don't want to be rude. I just want to... I'm smiling because I'm sitting here thinking that Mr. Elliot woke up one morning and decided to deed that amount of land unrestricted for no reason.
Not for no reason, sir, with respect. It's stated the reason is for park... For this site to be used for a fire station. And order as well, because this site is more than just the three acres. And additionally, the underlying zone is park. You're absolutely correct. But under the Empire Range specific plan, uses allowed under the park zoned area are also permitted... I'm sorry. I... Let me take a step back. Uses allowed under the open space zoned area are also permitted for areas zoned for park. And public facilities and structures are one of the uses permitted in the open space zone. Therefore, they are also permitted in zone... In areas zoned for park. That's why positioning fire station at this location, at this site, is legal.
So, additional thoughts here?
Yeah. We need this fire station. I'm glad that we're in a situation now that we have the money to actually build it because we had envisioned building this quite some time ago. My recollection of this whole thing had to do with the tone of the conversation changing when we realized that despite the fact that the barn materials had been salvaged, they were useless and couldn't at the point in time when we were going to try to move forward to build the barn, they were no longer suitable for actually building a barn. And that's why it's going to the zoo, and we're just using it as a facade down there. But we need for this to get done. I have no interest in moving money from one of the city's pockets into the other pocket between two departments that are all part of the same family. This isn't cooperation. We're the same family unit. So, you know, that's a discussion for Robert and the fire chief to have in next year's budget. So, I just want to get moving, and glad the cost is decreased, and we're going to move forward and get this fire station built. I'll move it.
Thanks. Carrie, Roger, got anything to add there?
No, I don't think it's... I mean, I can't disagree with how much history you have with this. But as far as a precedent, I don't think it sets a precedent. To me, I think we're kind of... We have checks and balances on this, and that's why it's before the council. But to me, I don't disagree with your argument, but I think in general, I think we need that fire station. So...
No, I actually... I mean, I can appreciate exactly where Ernie's coming from because we fought many battles to try to play catch-up in this side of the freeway, as we call it. What I'd like... I'm going to certainly support the resolution, but maybe one thought and consideration when it comes up again as we take another look at the park master plan. Because I don't really recall the last time we updated the park master plan that Park Site 52 was actually identified as a project on the list to be developed. And I just don't remember, to be frank with you, Ernie. So, maybe some in the nearer future, let's take a relook at that. And, you know, we looked at it before. We refined it before. And if there's some monetary value that we can reposition and move some monies around so we don't have a net loss. But I do agree with the attorney because I remember that resolution because we had a pretty vigorous discussion about that. And the barn was certainly one of it with Ms. Freitas. That was her passion. And myself, because I contributed $1,000 to help get that thing built, or rebuild, I should say. So, I think I'm hearing both sides. I agree with Roger. I don't think this is precedent-setting. I just think at the recognition of, you know, let's not make it look like it's precedent-setting. Well, the underlying reason, quite frankly, from a legal standpoint, is not a restricted property, though it's been anticipated and been talked about for many years as Park Site 52. So, let's revisit the master plan in near future, and let's revisit that thing. And if we have to play makeup someplace, then I think we make the commitment to the community because maybe there's been some miscommunication that we take responsibility for not communicating as well, that we are putting a fire station there, and, you know, we'll try to figure out a way to replace that, that three acres. That's the way I look at it. And I'll move the item with that, Mr. Mayor.
I think I already moved it.
Oh, then I'll second.
Okay. So, moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Councilmember Miklos. So, y'all done, Ernie, here?
No. What I'm going to ask Robert, I'm going to ask the... If this boat goes to what it looks like it's going, since I'm here in 4 to 1. I think, Robert, then what this brings to my mind, and I'd ask you and ask the city manager to supervise it, I'd like to know that every park site that we have is in our master plan, 51, 52, 55, and the rest of them. Verify to this council that we actually had the deed properly, you know, it's not open-ended as we're talking now that Mr. Elliot gave us unrestricted that did not satisfy a specific park requirement. That's what the number was rated on, on a park standard. Not a park standard, not open space standard. It was rated on a park and the number and the size and the location. Now, if we have other ones like that that are sitting in the developer's back pocket that hasn't been actually designated specifically to us, then it's time to clean it up now. Maybe this has told us we have a bigger problem we thought we had. I didn't think we did. I thought we were very competent when we negotiated the amount of the size of the requirement or the monetary amount that was set. And I'm really amazed that all of a sudden now... I heard both Steve and Carrie mention the barn. Keep in mind, the original big argument was the barn was not on Park Site 52.
That's correct.
It was on Nissian. Okay? But that's where it was. That's where it was stored. And the argument came back to 52 because that was the original homestead of the barn. So, when we got done arguing about Park Site 52 and not making it a cultural venue, we brought the idea of bringing the barn back to the original site because it made more sense. That's where we took it from. Why was it... Nissian was where it was stored. But that's the discussion on the barn. The barn had nothing really to do with Park Site 52 other than I agree with what Carrie said and Steve. We all knew the barn was, you know, was deteriorating. Okay? It wasn't construction lumber, quality lumber. But that has nothing to do with this. This is just something that... And I'm not looking for... I'm not looking for big bucks. I'm looking for a partnership that says you can't come in, other department, engineering, public works, whoever, and say, "I like that park site. I want it." Okay? That's not right. And that's... I cited you. It says you can't do that. Okay? That's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right. So, let me just wrap this up with a few thoughts. I guess what I'm going to say is that I think this is a continuation of a precedent that we set a while ago, which was really great ideas that Ernie had. I don't recall the library paying the park department for its location on our Folsom City Park. And I don't recall the Parks and Recreation Department paying the fire department for the repurposing and the acquisition of our old fire station. Those are great ideas that really started with you, Ernie. And we weren't trying to silo departments, which I feel would be unhealthy. So, you know, we treat different needs in different ways at different times in this community. And I think this is a super solution for a long-term need. And I'm, you know, very supportive of this. I think it works well. And Ernie, you and I are going to figure out a way to build all those parks, and we're going to get it done. So, anyway, you know, I think this is a continuation of a great precedent. I mean, you know, we get very clever in managing our civic assets. I mean, you know, we're not... I mean, you know, we're not putting houses here. We're not putting, you know, strip mall there. This is just another civic asset that I guarantee you, if I knocked on doors up there at Empire Ranch, they would be very pleased that part of that site is going to be this fire station and, you know, really will, in the long term, continue to improve the quality of life, you know, Folsom in general. So with that, no, Ernie, no, I'm just kidding. If you want to argue with me.
No, I wanted to close at my end of it.
Come on, I complimented you, Ernie.
I know you did. And I could debate on the two points you did.
Apparently, you could debate it for another four hours.
Yeah.
Excuse me, let me speak.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. That, what the sites that you said was exactly what I'm talking about, is partnerships. If you recall, in the library, the library commissioner, underhold of this was the leader. I led the park commission and together we brought to you a plan to council and you bought it. And they got the best library in Sacramento County.
This will be a great fire station at Empire Ranch because of this partnership.
Partnerships is what come.
That I would really like to see you support tonight, Ernie.
Oh, I don't know how I can say no to the lack of support and then vote for the fire.
All right.
Fire people are going to have to trust me, I love them, but I can't vote for this.
Okay, Ernie, all right. You made your point many times. All right. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so please call a roll on that item.
Councilmember Sheldon?
No.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes.
All right. Let's see how long we can make Item 7H. Item 7H.
Okay, item 7H is Resolution Number 9996. This is a resolution extending the term of lease with Folsom Chamber of Commerce for the Depot Building located at 200 Wool Street.
All right, thanks. And I believe, Ernie, you wanted this.
Let me try it again. I'm too, but sorry. Well, first of all, I'm recusing myself on this item because I don't want to vote a no and give the impression I don't believe that the Chamber of Commerce has a role in the city. I don't accept that. But by the same token, I can't support this item because this has been going on for 19 years, $1 per year, and we're talking about five or seven more years. And I think that's a perk that's way beyond, as I see the value in return. I'm not saying that it is in some value, but the value of 19 years already, $1 a year versus, it's like here, it's gone, there's no limit. So I'm just going to recuse myself because I want, I don't want my, I know vote, to reflect, I'm anti-Chamber. I'm anti-this perk. And I know I told Andy, don't offer me double the amount because that's only $2 a year. That's 100% increase, but that doesn't satisfy my thinking. So I'm recusing.
And Ernie, I think you just want to abstain when Krista calls for the vote there. So, okay, any other comments on this item?
I'll move the item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. So a motion by Vice Mayor Hall, seconded by myself. Please call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Abstain.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, did I hear it right or did somebody pull Item E?
That's what we just got done talking about. That was the item before this one.
Wrong item.
That was the fire station.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You don't want to relive that, do you?
I was, yeah. I don't know, I'd like to have the discussion again.
Then you can go home and watch it online, Steve.
Well, you know, I put a line next to it and then put the comment above it, so that's why I missed it.
All right, thanks, Steve. All right, so with that, next item, please.
Your next item is Old Business, Item 8A. This is Resolution Number 9997. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Quincy Engineering for professional engineering services for the Hinkle Creek Sewer Maintenance Project.
And I am going to recuse myself, and I'm going to be very specific about this recusal. I'm accusing myself because this is a financial arrangement between Quincy Engineering and the city of Folsom. Quincy Engineering is a client of mine. And in order for there not to be anything misconstrued about why that is, it's because it's a financial commitment between the city and Quincy. It's a contract, so I'll be out of here for a while.
Okay, great. Well, we'll let you know when the item is concluded. Vice Mayor? Okay, so with that, we have Marcus before us.
Mayor Moran, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources. I will make this presentation quick, basically just recap our June 13 meeting and the items that have happened since then and what the item is that's before you tonight. If you can recall, from June 13, 2017, city council provided direction to myself, as well as Mayor Moran, if needed, to do two things. One was to proceed with the design improvements that were identified in the alternatives analysis by Quincy Engineering minus the development of a access road. And then city staff, and if required, the mayor, to work with the regulatory agencies, the State Water Resources Control Board, and if needed, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board to identify alternatives to vacuum, the specific of a vacuum truck recovery for sanitary sewer spills. So the item before you tonight is for the design improvements that were identified back in June. And bullet number two, I'll get into here shortly as we move through a proposed plan for the city. Just to recall, the alignment here in the Hinkle Creek area is shown in gray. The five segments that we identified, four, five, eight, nine, and 10, were what we had called the high priority segments, which we found cracks, offsets, root intrusion, and even areas where the pipe was broken that were identified to be repaired. So that was all covered in the Quincy analysis, and it's also covered in the staff report. If you need specific answers, I can address those. But everything listed in the staff report was what was provided back in June as well. Just to identify our project schedule, this item tonight is for the design. We anticipate that that's likely to be done by the end of this year, which would allow the city to produce bidding documents for construction likely to begin, maybe April or May of next year, with the completion date of the construction of the pipe improvements in maybe late summer 2018. Restoration probably around the October timeframe, so getting out of the, kind of the peak summer months and into better restoration dates. And then the administrative task, which I'll go into next, likely to occur in January. And these are items that will have to be brought back before city council. So those items, either December or, I'm probably targeting a January timeframe for that. So the design improvements, some of the things we identified is, you know, are there ways that through the design, we could increase the capacity of the sewer pipeline? All right, now, there's existing sections pipe. We've identified in the Quincy analysis to upsize that to an eight-inch pipe, which is standard for city projects today. But we're thinking maybe of moving that up to a 10-inch pipe or maybe even a 12-inch pipe if the hydraulics were, just so if there is a backup or there is a blockage, there's additional capacity in the pipe to allow us more time for response, especially if we're not going down the access of a vacuum truck recovery. There's, you know, these non-mechanical measures and methods that we would plan to take in order to do that, and providing a bigger pipe would allow more capacity. And then also, one of the things that was identified at the last meeting and as well by the Hinkle Creek Working Group was the installation of these monitoring systems inside the sewer manholes. They can tell you two different things. One is if there's no flow in a sewer manhole, which sometimes can mean that something upstream is blocking flow from that manhole, or it can tell you in another manhole whether that wastewater level is rising, which could also indicate a blockage of some sort. So that's an additional improvement to response time, instead of waiting for visually an overflow to occur. And given where this area is, it's not likely that people are looking back in that area. So this would give us some additional or better response time to hopefully prevent or break up a blockage before there's an actual spill. And then one of the things in the design that we're going to try to do as best as we can is obviously limit the construction spoil. So anything that's needed for construction, try to limit that as best as possible. And that's also, you know, not just the, you know, the soil that's dug or rocks that are removed, but, you know, also on the mitigation side or plant material or trees. So anything that's out there, try to minimize as best as we can through construction, the impact. So on to the administrative and regulatory tasks. This was the second bullet from the second slide, which was what can the city do to identify an alternative to vacuum truck or vacuum response recovery? So one thing that the city will need to do, and this is what would likely come in January, is to, one, update the emergency response plan, because right now that indicates vacuum truck recovery for a sewer spill. And then also, because that emergency response plan is part of the sewer system management plan, the sewer system management plan needs to be approved by the governing board, which in this case is city council. Another thing we'll need to do is, because we physically will not have access with the vector trucks in some of those locations, from an operations and maintenance perspective, we will need to develop some sort of access agreements to those homes that currently are adjacent or have the sewer lines right behind them. Currently, they're in the backyards. Our proposal is to move them out into the backyards, but we'd still need access through a side yard if we need to bring in our television equipment or our flushing equipment to physically get that into a sewer manhole from the street in front of the homes. So that is something that we still will need to do with each of those residents that we would need access from. And then what we plan to do is obviously identify and implement a durable access methodology for sanitary sewer overflow response using non-mechanical measures, so not using a vector truck. What we've proposed and what we plan to do is look at developing maybe a single track, you know, dirt tracks where we can take wheelbarrows, shovels, buckets and everything carefully. Right now, if you go out on the hillside, you really can't get a wheelbarrow up and down the hillside on a 28 to 35% slope. So trying to identify something that's obviously more safe for our employees to work in if we don't have a mechanical means to remove a blockage or to actually vacuum up the sanitary sewer overflow. So what we're looking to do, currently, there's a temporary bridge where our sewer line is now, and we use that for access. We'd like to upgrade that as part of this to, one, it's installed crooked, two, it's probably one that wouldn't be up to code, building a new one today. And it wouldn't be, you know, a concrete bridge. We would identify something that fits in with the rest of the nature center there. Looking at a single or double-track dirt trail similar to what's existing on the lower side near Hinkle Creek, so that we can access that safely with current staff and the non-mechanical means that our staff are going to have to carry and move back and forth between either Canyon Rim Drive on the upper side or Oak Avenue on the lower side. One definite is the tree mitigation plan. So any of the trees that come out that are required to be mitigated will be, and that will be identified in a tree mitigation plan. That will also identify if there are certain plants that obviously need to be replanted. But the goal is to identify a variety of trees and different sizes of trees to plant within that nature preserve and identify a water source, you know, for the first three to five years. And then again, trying to limit the overall construction spoils. So with that, our recommendation is to approve Resolution 9997 for the sewer pipeline construction related documents and engineering design. And just so you know, once this part of the project is done, the construction project is likely to come back to city council as a publicly bid project, so this will be before city council again.
Okay, with all the details and stuff as far as what's been proposed?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. So let's see. I have no request to speak on this, but any questions for Marcus?
I think this is, exactly captures the direction we gave that evening, so good job, Marcus.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the respect I have for the Hinkle Creek group for working with the city and then how much commitment and how much work you guys, your crew, has put in to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I know Marcus and I know Everett's been giving this a lot of very personal attention and, you know, also, you know, all the folks in your department that I know you're bouncing ideas off of as well. So, you know, pass along my thanks to everybody in your department there, Marcus. I don't know if you were mentioning to me, maybe some of my ideas will work, but maybe they'll tell me they're crazy, so hopefully they're, you know, together.
You don't know unless you ask the question, right? Yep. So we said, just ask the question.
But yeah, so, but thanks for all the great work on this. And, you know, again, this is entire council's commitment, as well as staff, is to, you know, keep the Hinkle Creek group well-informed along the way here. And so.
I think having a military background, sometimes when you don't say no here, go up to the top and ask them to say yes, it works.
No, and, you know, I guess to pass along my thanks to, you know, really what I thought was a pretty prompt response from our appeal for some, you know, additional measures here. And I know it helped for, you know, to have Marcus as our, you know, kind of our liaison there, because he does work with a number of those folks. So thanks for your talents there, Marcus. I think that was instrumental.
Yeah, your letter was great, too.
Thanks.
So with that.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Miklos, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Moran?
Yes.
All right.
Good job, Marcus.
Thank you.
Really good job.
All right, next item, please.
Okay, your next item tonight is New Business, Item 9A. This is the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience Progress Update, Contract Approval and Proclamation for Johnny Cash Day in the City of Folsom. You have two resolutions under this item.
Great. Good evening, Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In just over a month, we're going to celebrate the completion of another piece, I think, of important community infrastructure. And we just got done talking about infrastructure. When you talk about barns that have been turned into zoo exhibits, that's public infrastructure, parks, roads, fire stations, that's all infrastructure. So this is one of the more unique pieces. And as I said, in a little more than a month, we're going to talk about, or celebrate the completion of the physical trail for the, that's been dedicated to Johnny Cash. So in terms of the update portion of this agenda item, there are a couple of things that have changed since you've seen this. You've seen this project a couple of different times, but it has been re-envisioned a little bit, and that's what I wanted to mention to you this evening. So the red line indicates the new extent of the Johnny Cash Trail. And up at the upper right-hand corner, up here near Folsom Lake, that really is milepost zero of the Phase One portion of the trail. But it really didn't get credited that way when we first came up with this concept of the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience. But in terms of the process of working through with Folsom Prison and the proposed locations of some of the art pieces, they, just to be perfectly blunt, weren't excited about having extra people gather at public art on prison property, even though the city owns an easement there. The easement's very specific, it's for the trail and transportation, recreation uses only. So that was a little bit of a setback, but as oftentimes in a project like this, these kinds of setbacks ultimately improve a project. I think that's what's happened here. So the extent of the trail now has been re-envisioned as up here at Folsom Lake and then all the way down here, coming out on Riley Street, just above Rainbow Bridge in the Historic District. So just a couple of, you know, notable places on the map. This, of course, is Folsom Prison. This is technically CSP SAC, California State Prison Sacramento. This is Old Folsom Prison here. This is Prison Road through here. This is East Natoma. This is where we are right now, at City Hall. This is the Civic Center, Rodeo Park, rodeo arena, the zoo, and the American River Lake Natoma back here. So as we re-envisioned this, we didn't change a lot. We changed, you know, half of the locations, let's say, but those are, those are the new locations of the art components. So now what we have is, and the art really hasn't changed, just some locations. But now we have locations up here at Folsom Lake in the Historic District. We actually have 46,000 cars a day that are going to see these art installations once we get to that point. So that right there is a good thing in terms of having this project identified with more people than it was originally. It's a little bit more hidden, as previously envisioned. These are the names of the art pieces. You've seen these things before. I'm going to flash through them here quickly for you, but we're going to bookend the trail with Cassius Pick Number One and Cassius Pick Number Two, and that's relative to Resolution 9999 tonight on your agenda. So real quick, through the art pieces, this is Pick Number One up at Folsom, near Folsom Lake. This is Folsom Lake Crossing over here. This is the Phase One Johnny Cash Trail that we built and connected with the existing Class One Trail that goes up the hill parallel to the road. Folsom Lake in scale would be starting, water would be starting up here at the top of the screen. There's a tremendous view of Folsom Lake, particularly when it has water in it, from this point right here. So this is the location of this seven-foot-tall bronze pick. Hello, I'm Johnny Cash. Will be constructed adjacent to the Johnny Cash Bridge. There's a very nice promontory up there. There was a very simple little platform that we all gathered on nearly three years ago for the ribbon cutting there. We're going to replace that with a more suitable landscape and small plaza development for the bronze sculpture that has been taken from the very famous picture of Johnny in Folsom Prison. Then there's Greystone Chapel, and that, you'll see on the 14th, at the grand opening, Greystone Chapel pieces moved to the salvaged crane pad. And so I'm going to show you a very unique video here later in the presentation, but the pad that we had to build to set the crane, to bring in this bridge, was just too much real estate to ignore, so that's really our new location of the Greystone Chapel piece. And that, of course, is taken after Greystone Chapel inside Folsom Prison. Next piece is Ring of Fire. Nothing's changed there. This is along the Phase One portion of the trail. Immediately to the left of the picture is the water treatment plant and the construction that you've seen on Natoma Street there. And so this is the existing bike trail, top of the rock pinnacle there, and that's the 12-foot stainless steel guitar picks forming the Ring of Fire. Folsom Prison Blues will move to below Rodeo Arena or Rodeo Park. So in scale, Rodeo Park is probably over here off the lower right corner of the screen, and this is the bike trail, the existing bike trail that leads from Rodeo Park parking lot down to Liedestorf. And there's that beautiful kind of corkscrew shape. Public Works built that trail probably 20 years ago. And there's a really perfect knoll for the sculpture that is Folsom Prison Blues, and that's the vertical black poles that if you stand in one very specific location, it'll be denoted right here, and that'll be the spot. If you stand in that one location, this profile, this silhouette of Johnny Cash snaps into view. Any other location as you walk around the sculpture, you won't see it, but if you stand in that one location, you will. Next up is Rusty Cage. This location didn't change either. It's on a beautiful hilltop overlooking the American River and looking back over Robbers' Ravine towards the zoo, so we're good there. And then, of course, up at the corner of Natoma and Folsom Lake Crossing is the Legacy Park. No changes to that, other than earlier this year, we built the donor wall right in this location here, just above the alignment of the guitar. And as you recall, the sound hole of the guitar will feature a very large sculpture of Johnny facing the prison, as he would. He would focus his attention on the prison and the inmates, not looking back at the public. And just as a reminder of where the inspiration comes from or what this sculpture might feel like, the horses on the right are a built sculpture in Spain, or City Clerk would like to acquire these. It might be her most favorite artworks ever. In scale, a human standing next to these horses would probably be just to the top of the light here. But the point of this, not so much in scale, is how dynamic the sculptures can be, where they can be lit inside. You can see sky through the sculptures, and we can really make something very dynamic that is special virtually any day of the year and day or night. And then at the other end of the trail, where the existing bike trail that comes off, Liedestorf Street, comes out to the existing trail next to Greenback Lane, and in scale, Rainbow Bridge would be right up here off the top of this screen, but there's a beautiful spot underneath a very large oak tree right here, and the Moose Lodge is probably their fence line is right down along here. So you've driven by this, you know, 1,000 times, and there's a beautiful, nice, flat spot for this sculpture. And we believe that this is city property with maybe 32 square feet of PG&E property in there, so we're working with PG&E to figure out there's some old funky property lines down there, but we've got a really good spot for that one. And again, being right there on Greenback Lane, we'll be able to send or put the art in front of about 26,000 cars a day as they drive by. Now, between the existing project we're building and the existing trail is Liedestorf Street, so we have a little gap. So we've talked that through, and we're going to do a little wayfinding on Liedestorf, because for everybody that lives in Folsom and knows this, this trail, it's going to be simple. But for what we expect to be quite a lot of tourists that come to Folsom to see this when we're done, they're not necessarily going to know these little zigs and zags as they go from, say, the Historic District up to Folsom Lake to make the loop around. So we're going to use the pick design as an arrow and as a wayfinding breadcrumb, if you will, on Liedestorf, and we'll, and these will be actually stencils on the trail, a white background with the black pick, with the pick pointing the direction you should be traveling. And then on Liedestorf, we're actually probably going to put the white line actually kind of as an edge line or fog line on the pavement. It's not, there's not really enough room for a Class Two bike lane.
Robert, could we do the white in thermoplastic?
We're, I'm working with Public Works on that, but we think that's not necessarily effective, that paint's going to be better and easier to maintain long-term.
No, you're going to have to be painting it every year.
Right, yeah.
That's why I'm wondering if there's a thermoplastic that we wouldn't have to touch for five or six years.
Yeah. We're doing that integration thing. I'm using my cohorts in Public Works to make the recommendation. So anyway, that's how we're going to link this up, so this is very, very, very clear, you know, from the Historic District all the way to Folsom Lake. So the next update is what we've been up to and what you can't see. You've seen our work up there at Prison Road, and obviously, we've now cleared underneath the road. You can see daylight through. We're going to be paving that soon, but here's Jim Knopka. And by the way, I'm not sure if I've got my number just exactly right, but he might be the $18 million man now, because we just got notified of another grant that will connect the Oak Parkway Trail System, which is the powerline corridor with those east-west from Empire Ranch or Parkway all the way over here to the Civic Center. We've got the grant that will now fund going underneath Natoma to connect to the Johnny Cash Trail. So we've got our crosstown trails all paid for, not quite linked, but paid for. But my point of this slide here, and we've actually paved this now, I just don't have a current picture, is to just illustrate the beautiful traversing of the contours and the curves and the ups and the downs that this trail is. And again, nobody's seen this yet. This is prison property that the city owns an easement on, so very, very few people have seen this, but it's going to be phenomenal, guaranteed. Then over here on the left is Robbers' Ravine.
Robert, is that where they were in past, I don't know if they did it this year, but for several years, they were doing mountain bike races up there? Okay.
Yep, and that's all been done with permission of the prison. And on the left is Robbers' Ravine, and that was construction activity probably at the beginning of summer, but I'd like you to watch this short video. I'll show you what we did about 11 days ago. Krista, you ready?
Yeah.
Come on.
All these wannabe engineers, Dave.
Okay, give me a second here. I'll get out of this and back to where I was.
You should put a Johnny Cash song to that.
Well, you know, I leave the videographer as an artist in his own right. Let him make the choices. So...
I bet he tried that argument and lost, is my guess.
Okay, so a little update on the fundraising. So you've probably seen the donor wall up there. We're doing very well with that, and tremendous community support. One of our most recent plate settings was the Rotary Clubs, plural, of Folsom, who got together and bought a $10,000 plate amongst the three clubs, which was a fantastic show of support there, and there was some Rotarians here earlier that were key in that. But there'll be many plates going up as a result of the sponsorship program for the grand opening ceremonies. But the thing I want to show you here in the middle, this J. Cash 50 license plate. So we have, you know, many partners throughout our community, and the prison is a partner. Obviously, we acquired the easement from the prison. We work with, we have the prison inmate work crews in the community, three of them work in our city, two in Parks and Recreation, one in Public Works. We have Cal PIA over there, you know, providing job training. And we had an idea, so we thought, maybe we could do something very uniquely Folsom with PIA and DMV. And we now have the ability to sell these as limited editions, one of, we have 100 of them committed from DMV, PIA, to put these up for sale as a fundraiser, so the net proceeds of this go to the project. So this is what we've been working on. So we've already sold two, and we basically just started our marketing effort on this. So with 100 of those, this project, the art project, will net over $200,000 in proceeds to go back into the future vision. So a lot of things going on relative to the fundraising effort. So the grand opening, Saturday, October 14th. It's an all-day-long affair, fun run and ride during the day, so I've sent out, I think, a save the date to you all. So 8:30 is the grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony. 9:30 is the community bike ride. 9:45 is the 10K fun run. 10 o'clock is the 4.2-mile fun run. I know our mayor really does not like, you know, these odd mileage things, but we're running the Johnny Cash Trail, mayor, so just join us and go with it. There's a festival from 8 o'clock to about 12:30. Then we're going to actually ironically close the trail down, because we've got a very special event to do that evening, and that's the Out Among the Stars Dinner on the Robbers' Ravine Bridge that you just saw the video of. Out Among the Stars is a song by Johnny Cash, so that's obviously the theme. And tickets are still available, but there are less than 30 left. So they are, we're not, we're barely marketing this at all. They're selling literally every day, so if there's anybody out there interested...
What's the total sale on that, then? I mean, what's the...
Total attendance?
Yeah, attendance for the dinner?
184.
Eighty-four.
Yeah. So before you, this evening, in working with the city clerk, I spotted interesting numbers coming up on agendas, and I secured Resolution 9999 for the item before you to award a contract to Adon Romo, artist for seven of the eight pieces out there, to make the molds for the picks. It's a four-month process to do that, so we're getting a little jump start. But I think we're going to hear some very interesting announcements at our grand opening about where some support is going to come from this project, and we already have fund balance available for this, so this is getting a little jump start, so we can continue to produce the videos that help us do the marketing, because this success formula is really through social media and our ability to excite people and keep them interested. So there's a multifaceted reason there to do that. So I will conclude my comments on that particular resolution, unless you have any questions.
So I have a question for City Clerk. If we continue this item to the next meeting, do the resolution numbers change?
It probably would.
Okay, all right, just kind of wondering about that.
Robert, I had a question on the, I don't know where we, if we talked about this or not, but is there going to be an app for the trail, like geocaching and...
We originally envisioned that, yes. We're likely, just because of the long-term maintenance effort and costs of maintaining an app on two platforms, we're probably going to use an existing app that uses programmed pictures to activate the app and then get you to the website and have the website actually hold all the information, but use the app to interface with it. And it's called Erasmus, is one example of that, and we've seen that in action already, and we really like the way that looks, and it would keep us out of the maintenance obligation of an app. So we're going to do something digital on it, for sure.
All right, any questions?
I'll move Resolution 9999.
I'll second it. Okay, that resolution moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Morin?
Yes, and let's...
And I'll also move Resolution 10,000. I kind of can't believe I'm here to see Resolution 10,000, but...
All right, and I'll go ahead and second that, so please call the roll on that item.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Morin?
Yes, and so, Robert, so the donation for the, what you showed there, the picture and the plate and stuff, that's $2,000, then?
It's actually $2,950 when I quote you those net proceeds, because there's $700 of framing there.
Oh, okay, I got it.
Yeah, this is leather, this is leather wrapped, and when you stick a three-dimensional license plate in there, it gets a little complicated for them. But there's, you know, there's a lot of detail in here. There's a laser engraved plate in the bottom, which is a portion of the lyrics of Folsom Prison Blues. We actually, on the back, just because it's special, we're telling the story briefly of Folsom as Granite City, the origin of the prison, Cal PIA and DMV, 45,000 license plates a day. So it's really giving people a little preserved history here.
Okay, well, sign me up for one, okay?
Will do.
I'm in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The only other thing that I wanted to add is, in addition to all the 45 things that are going on related to Johnny Cash Day, that's also Bark and Splash, and there is some sort of a peddler's fair on Sutter Street on the same day.
I believe Open House of the Fire Station?
It's going to be a really, 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 really busy day in Folsom.
Just like every weekend, it seems to have, right?
Mayor, there's only other, one other question on this. It's numbered 1 through 100. You can have any number but 1 or 7.
Okay, I want number 10,000.
1 through 100.
I think you should get 100 to go with.
Yeah, you can give me number 100.
Okay, you got it.
All right, so that concludes everything, and now we get to the important stuff like the city manager's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, gentlemen. Because I'm the sappy type, I like to, I want to just sit and pause for a couple of seconds over Resolution 10,000. Since 1946, the city council has taken more than 10,000 significant actions, and that's, that is an amazing, amazing deal when you think about all of the work that has been done by the staffs and the city councils that have preceded us over the years. So pretty amazing. Congratulations on hitting...
I was trying to figure out how many times Ernie was sitting in the audience when all those resolutions were going through.
9,999 of them, for sure. We can't find Resolution Number One...
1776, is that the...
But just for your little history lesson, I can tell you what was in Resolution Number Two. The second action by the brand-new city council back in 1946 was to establish a salary for the city attorney at the grand sum of $25 a month. Now, our council was certainly worth more than $25 a month, and we pay him more than that, and we're thankful to have him here. But kidding aside, today is Pam John's first official council meeting, so...
All right.
Welcome to...
A first official council meeting as a community development director, but it's certainly not her first official council meeting.
Not, not her first. Her first is community development director. She is the newest member of my executive team. I am thrilled to have her here. You know, good people come and go over time. We're just very glad that we continue to attract the type of talent that Pam represents. And interestingly enough, again, just as a little bit of a history lesson, Pam is the third executive team member that has been appointed in less than 12 months, and she joins Felipe, who you all know joined us in June. And Dave Nugent became part of the executive team back in December of last year. And if you want to go back just a little bit before that, Mr. Wong joined the executive team back in early 19, or 2016. So we have had a number of great, great additions to the city's executive team in just a very, very short time, and I couldn't be more thrilled that we continue to attract this type of talent. And why wouldn't we? Because as Councilmember or Vice Mayor Howell pointed out, there is always plenty to do in Folsom. We've got a lot of very, very busy days. I want to look out in the future, because you've heard a lot about the things that are coming up in the next couple of weeks, but one of the premier events in the city of Folsom is our annual Veterans Day Parade, which of course is on November 11th. The Wayne Spence Veterans Day Parade is accepting applicants through Friday, October 22nd, so if you want a float in the Veterans Day Parade, march, dance, or otherwise cart... so if you want a float, a float in the Veterans Day Parade, march, dance, or otherwise cartwheel your way through the parade route, we would love to have you. I don't believe we ever really turn anybody away.
Yep.
It's a fantastic event. It generates a great deal of community support. I love standing out and watching the parade and meeting the veterans and all of those that come out and support our men and women in the military, so November 11th is the date, October 27th is your deadline to apply to participate. Otherwise, if you don't want to march or cartwheel, please do come out and join us in the event, and with that, I'll bid you all good evening.
All right, great, thanks, Everett. Roger?
I had the privilege to present the 100th Eagle Scout of Troop 1855 this week, or last weekend, and the proclamation to him, so that was awesome, and then I also got the privilege to sit in an amazing 9/11 memorial ceremony that both chiefs, police, and fire did an outstanding job, so that was, that was great to see. Oh, and today's the official, the anniversary of Johnny Cash's death, too, so I don't know how's the whole Johnny Cash thing.
Very good, thanks, thanks, Roger. Steve?
I just want to say congratulations and thank you for all the work, Robert, if you'd pass along to your staff for the 20th Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. God, I feel old, but I'm here, it's, again, a well-planned event, and it sounds like a lot of talent out there, Mr. Mayor, so I hope you have a good prize, so when we beat your team, we can take advantage of it, instead of the tootsie rolls you passed out years ago. But anyway, if you haven't signed up, I'm still hearing a couple of people short on their, completing their foursomes, so please contact Park and Rec right away, so hopefully you see this video or this broadcast before this Friday. T-off time is 10:45, and I want to thank advance, in advance, all the community members that have come out to support this Saturday's Community Service Day, as we saw the presentation earlier. It's just, it's just amazingly thrilling, and using the manager's words to some degree, compassionate and heartwarming to see that every year, we're getting more and more, so it looks like we're about 2,800 this year, so you know we're going to have to hit 3,000 next year. So, anyway, I just want to say thank you to the community in advance of Saturday's work.
Great, thanks, Stephen, all your leadership on that. Ernie?
I had the opportunity on Saturday and Sunday to participate in a yard sale. It's my first one ever. My daughter does it often, but I was a novice, but it gave me an opportunity to meet the people of Folsom, I have all kinds of people, and I have to admit, I'm amazed by how good a town we have. I mean, the people are just so polite and friendly, and we had a lot of workers from different areas, and it was a fundraiser for the river park that was, we call it, which is a proposal to come sometime years from now on the courtyard. Also, our Folsom High School football team is doing quite well. This is up and down, but they'll be better. We haven't had much of a home game system in Folsom, but that's coming maybe a couple, a couple of weeks from now. I will not participate in the golf tournament as far as swinging a club, because I've got a bad arm and can't swing a club. However, that doesn't really hurt my game, because my game is lousy anyways, but now I got a ski sport, but I will be there trying to harass everybody to buy the raffle tickets, so I will participate. Other than that, should be one heck of a weekend again.
Great, thanks, thanks, Ernie. Carrie?
Just a reminder to everybody to please drive carefully and pay attention to when there's cars stopped in front of you, especially if that's me driving that car in front of you.
All right, great, and I also, this Sunday, at the exact same time Roger was presenting that 100th Eagle, I was doing the same at my old scout troop 237, so thanks for filling in there, Roger, and it wasn't the two, it wasn't the 100 there, but I think it was the 91st, so they're getting close to their 100th Eagle.
I'd like to know how many 94 has.
Yeah, I think there's some, have quite a few, so with that, everything else has been well said, and I am way under the weather, so we are going to adjourn the meeting at 8:05.